Late past 7:30.
Oh, late park this at 7:30 right off.
That's right. That's what my computer says that too.
I will call the meeting of Redding Municipal, Redding Municipal Life Department Board of Commissioners to order. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Life Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded at RMLD's office, 230 Ash Street, Redding, Massachusetts for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield as well, as live streamed on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. The role of the Chair is to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Will all participants please identify themselves, starting with those participating in the meeting, which there's no one right there?
Correct, yeah.
Vice Chair Pacino will serve as the Board Secretary for the evening's meeting. And welcome to the cab. You are the Citizens Advisory Board Representative at tonight's meeting. Are there any liaisons present that would like to comment?
I am present. I am ready for my questions.
Are there any members of the public?
I'd like to make a comment to the public comment, please.
Sure.
Okay, so I want to state that I disagree with the decision that the interim General Manager has made removing the Financial Services Manager. It is not a decision I feel that the interim manager should have made at this point. I feel it's a faulty judgment at this point. I'm going to reserve judgment. My support of the General Manager is waning at this point because of this, and I'm going to reserve judgment going forward at this point.
I'm going to suggest with the Chair that we table this comment.
You can't, I just made it. I just made it. It's under public comment.
But any--
It's under public comment.
Sure, but any discussion of it?
A discussion, fine, but I just want to make a public comment, okay?
All right.
What? Speaking as a resident. Phil Pacino and I live at 5 Washington Street, Unit D6, if you'd like to fully identify myself as a right bear.
We're going to move on to meeting minutes approval. Did all the Commissioners present have time to review the minutes from January and February of 2022? Is there any discussion about them?
You want a motion? Okay, I'll move that the Board of Commissioners approve the minutes of February 16, 2022, and April 8, 2022, meeting on the recommendation of the Board Secretary.
Eric, I thought January and February in our packet.
For executive, regular--
All right, 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 okay.
February, April.
Right.
Yeah.
Regular session, okay.
All of us in favor?
Pacino, I.
Do you get a second on that?
A second.
Yeah, I heard Bob second it.
Motion passes 401 abstention. And we are moving on to the interim General Manager's report.
Excellent. So we're going to talk a couple of key topics, talent, HR-related type stuff. It's always the most important thing, so I'll start with that. We'll hit a couple of other key points, salary surveys, customer surveys, flex time, interns, et cetera. So I'll walk through these one at a time. The important piece, as we've been talking about for the past several times, has been focused on talent, the team. So lots been going on, a lot of attention by the leadership team relative to internal moves, internal promotions, and also new hires. So this is a quick snapshot in your book on the slide here. So since July 1st and through the end of this month, another two weeks. So at the end of the day, July, there are four internal promotions. Part of the reason behind the internal promotions is to put individuals where they feel most productive within the organization, provide flexibility for people in the organization so they don't feel like they're stuck in a rut, and also recognize career development. So if you notice there, we promoted an assistant lineman to an assistant general foreman. We also promoted three linemen to leader linemen, which was great. We hired a facility worker, which you guys know we were lean in the summer months, and also somebody for the IT department, technology support systems analyst. August, there was a move, a customer, so one of the customer service individuals moving to customer billing specialist. New hires, two substation technicians, and three apprentice linemen. You're going to see this apprentice theme coming in. We're trying to not only recruit seasoned and experienced individuals, but also individuals that either are early in their career or middle of their career to try and broaden the skills and perspective and attitudes and energy of the whole organization. September, we have one move, an internal individual to a GIS specialist position. That's a new position that Hameed and I have been working on the E&amp;O organization. So that's a new position, it's very important. You'll hear a theme of data and digitization as we talk more about feedback from the NEPA Conference and also things that we're doing within the organization. In terms of new hires, we have two apprentice linemen. I already mentioned the concept of apprentice, a facilities manager, so we have a leader now for the facilities team, which is great. We've hired a Director of IT. That individual started on Monday, already adding value by working on some security issues. Again, we continue, security is an ongoing thing, you have to stay on top of it. So John has already hit the ground running, which is great. We extended an offer that was accepted to a Director of Finance and Accounting. That's finance and accounting, different than business and finance. There were some organizational changes underneath that organization. That individual has municipality experience and a lot of experience in finance, which is particularly important as we go forward. We'll talk more about that. And then we extended an offer that was accepted to an Assistant Director of IRD. That Assistant Director of IRD has been a position that's been open for about a year. So there's no presumption in that Assistant Director role. That individual's actually coming from California probably a couple of weeks later, just in terms of coordinating their move. They want to move back to New England. We still have 10 openings that are being filled. As you guys remember, we are staff, like when we're fully, you know, fully, all team members are in place, a little bit over 80 people. We've been running at about 60 people for a couple of years now. So these new hires that we've brought in, these 13 new individuals, are bringing some energy, they're bringing some new skills, new perspective, which is great. The promotions within the organization and the moves allow the individuals within the organization to feel that there's a career path for them. So overall, this talent acquisition and development is very positive. In terms of the, you know, team management, team leadership, this is on the next slide here. We had talked before about an external salary survey. We were hoping to try and get it done in the month of September, but it's a little bit more involved. So we have an organization that we've engaged, kickoff meeting was earlier this month. They'll be completed by year-end, so the data and the numbers will be valid for the first part of 2023. That's how they set it up. We will also, and that will do all of the positions except for the lineman positions. We'll really rely on the lineman positions with the MEEAM survey and the APA survey. Those are more regionally relevant and they're more specific as opposed to having somebody kind of learn the lineman piece. We've talked before about employee surveys. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
Will the survey compare their salaries nationally or just in--
No, regional, yeah. Greater Boston, North Shore, Boston. Well, Greater Boston is how they'll end up doing it, so yeah. But they'll look at, you know, they'll take data from, it's a national-based company that does this kind of work, so they're very experienced in it. They've got a nice program in terms of how they go through it, but the final results will be Greater Boston, focus on North Shore where we can. Employee survey, we've talked about, you know, we've talked about this as a group in the past. At the end of the day, our goal is to try and get it done soon. We want to make it, I use the word nameless so that people can be open. I did not use the word anonymous. So, and simple. We'll probably end up using a platform called Qualtrics. It'll cost less than $500 to do it. They'll implement it, et cetera. The key thing about doing a survey like this is to do it, you know, how we create the questions. So I'll probably, I'll probably share the questions as we develop them without, yeah, so I'll share them. We might end up talking about them briefly at the October meeting, so I'm going to try and get this done in November. It'll be good feedback. I'll talk more about what's happening with the group. Generally speaking, I think, you know, Hameed and my observation, the rest of the organization, is that the internal organization is very excited, there's a lot of energy, there's very positive feedback right now. That Flex Time program is a piece of it. There's a bunch of little things that we've been doing and big things. Flex Time is not a little thing, it's a big thing. We were doing little things like, we had a program for people to do Verides, where they could actually have a platform that allows them to stand up or sit down at their desk at various times of the day, a little more health-oriented. We removed a requirement to have a doctor's note, so we added, I think, about 10, nine of them that people are particularly happy about. Again, small things, right? It's, but important and health-related. The Flex Time, as you guys know, we had Flex Time in place from July through the end of August. We did it as a pilot program. The structure behind the Flex Time program was at the, again, coordination with the supervisor or the manager or the director of the group, but either four 10-hour days, five 8-hour days, which is a regular schedule, or four nines and then a half-day on Friday. So everybody kind of fitted to a schedule that worked well. We spent some time trying to make sure that that worked for the customer service window. We did. We'll walk through in a second what we're doing on that for the fall. Hameed and I are working through a Flex Time program for the grid assets, the engineering teams and the line ops, the field-based teams as well. So we think we've got a good plan on that that'll work. We're going to do a little bit more refinement to that and probably roll that out at the first of October realistically.
So is that, is that going to be negotiated?
Nope. Yeah, no, no. Yeah, so I'll talk, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's supposed to be, I will make this a discussion, I want to make it a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so right now, it's, we're calling it, so we're calling it a pilot. And the reason why we call it a pilot is to give us flexibility in terms of not putting it into contracts. I'll talk about, we'll bring, we'll bring you guys up to speed in terms of where we are with all the contract-related stuff. Front window, we're going to basically do it Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 5:30, so that's an hour, half hour earlier, half hour later. We had tried in the summer by letting the window stay open until 7:00. There really wasn't, I mean, it takes time, you know, we ran it for nine weeks, but I think the general consensus, having that half hour after 5:00 was actually valuable, but beyond that didn't really help much. So, and the customer service team, some of them come in on Friday, a lot of catch-up to do, right? There's email as well as window as well as phone-based stuff. So we're going to extend that through December 22nd. We'll see how it works for all the groups, but that's been, there's a sense of positive feedback in terms of providing that flexibility to the team, and we're still getting the work done, which is great. So I think there's a bit of energy tied to that as well.
Has anyone changed what they selected, you know, the four-day instead of the three-day?
Yeah, so, you know, sometimes, oh, I'm going to do four 10-hour days, and then I think after the first week, 10 hours is a long day. So, and people have adjusted, right? In some weeks, you know, depending upon what happens, they, we give them the flexibility, they don't have to decide. They have to be in coordination with the leadership team, you know, whoever their managers, et cetera, because, you know, we have to get stuff done. And it's not just them getting stuff done, but as you guys know, we are an in-person organization, because there's a lot of interaction, not only within the individual departments, but across departments. So, you know, that's, we are not doing hybrid, we are not doing remote, we are in person. And I think this flexibility here gives people the flexibility, yet they still feel the, I'll say it, they feel the energy and the coordination about being inside the office. And we just, you know, we do hallway conversations, we do formal meetings, we do impromptu meetings, we've got questions. It's just, we get stuff done. So there's, it's been very productive, and we'll see what we do at the end of the year. You know, it's highly possible that we make it permanent, but right now, it's just a pilot program. Any questions on flex or employee survey, salary survey?
Bob?
Just on the, not being open on Friday?
Yeah, window's not open.
Okay, is, I mean, traffic-wise, I mean, you guys know better how many people typically come through, so it's a, I mean, I know town halls close it on a Friday now, so--
Close on Friday, so--
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't know if there was any, any traffic.
No, no feedback. When we first did it back in early July, there was a little adjustment, people come in and, oh, the door's closed, no. But it hasn't, like, we can see people coming and going from our windows, so the people have gotten, have figured out that Friday the doors, the window's not closed. Like, we still, there's still people in here, the place isn't empty. There are people that still do, you know, five, eight-hour days, there's plenty to do, but the window is closed on. And the other thing that I think was an important adjustment is to let it be open at five, that half hour between 5:00 and 5:30, is that actually helpful.
Do you get a lot of people that come to the window?
Yeah, I'm going to see--
What do they come for?
Pardon me?
What do they come for?
Um, well, so a lot of people come to pay their bills.
But there's a mailbox outside the--
Yep, I know, Phil, but there's a lot of people that still like to walk up to the window and get a receipt. I mean, really. And I think the other thing, by having that window open, it's also good from a customer relation perspective. They see people here, and that personal touch. I know it's through a window, right? But that's still, that personal touch is there. I mean, so, you know, I don't have the actual numbers. I used to have, so we actually put it in our cahoots thing, it was 1,800 calls a month, was that the number? So we get a lot of calls a month, but I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess, I don't know, 20, you know, 15, 20 people a day? That's not scientific, I don't know. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Does the window person ever cross-sell the time of use?
Good thought, no. They do--
Voluntary program.
They do on the phone. They do on the phone.
Glad I have them.
That was my mom, by the way, so, very sensitive to closing that window. Worked it.
On Friday?
She worked, that was her job.
Okay. We finished off a couple of weeks back, the summer intern program. We had three summer interns. The summer interns were, there was an electrical engineering undergraduate from Merrimack College, there was a data analytics individual student from Endicott, and then there was an environmental sciences individual from Colby College. As you guys know, we are very analytical here. They all, they all had different roles and projects, they did a whole bunch of projects. They commented several times that, as they talked to their classmates, they were other places. Here, they were actually doing real work. There's a whole bunch of things that they worked on, load forecast. One of them was championing, as you guys know, we're doing some discussions relative to a landfill solar site. This gentleman did a lot of background research, learned a lot about the online tax assessors maps, et cetera. I mean, all sorts of skills these guys learned. Our purpose of the program was to introduce, not introduce, it was to make the RMLD, but also the electricity utility industry, just a little bit more aware in different schools, et cetera. Again, this is just three people, but they were energized when they walked out of here to create a positive reputation of RMLD within the host schools, so very, very positive, particularly with Merrimack and Endicott. Colby's obviously in Maine, but still good. And the other goal was actually to have value, so they actually provided value to us as RMLD. Overall, a lot of learning for them, a lot of help for us, and, you know, we looked at it as part of our recruiting program. So we'll continue on, we'll do it again next year. But it was, it was, they, it was good having these guys around, and we're going to continue to do it. Hameed and I were trying to get the double E guy into the engineering group, but we kept him busy, so, but we'll do more and more of that, so that's a good thing. Questions about the summer program? You have a theme of trying to get a broader sense of, a broader set of people and their careers that come to be part of our team, right? And that's part of the goal, because there's a, that diversity of career experience is valuable. So that's what we're doing. There was an article in your package relative to, I think, as we had talked about before, and it's becoming more and more clear, what happens in Asia and Europe from the energy perspective. It just went back. But anyways, that article from, it was a Bloomberg, right? Anyways, the, while electricity doesn't travel long distances, natural gas and coal and oil does. And so what's happening in Europe right now due to the Russia-Ukraine war has implications here in the Northeast. Now, for us as RMLD, because of the way we've structured our contracts, it is not significant, but the IOUs are feeling a little bit more pain for that. You know, there was an article that the Chairman, the Chairwoman brought, the Chairperson brought forward, Business Week, talked about what's happening in Europe. And so this chart here, RMLD payment aging, it's a chart that we put up on a regular basis anyways, but generally speaking, our, the payment history has been very strong, just under, just over 98% in 90 days. We do offer, as you guys know, a 15% prompt payment discount, so that's part of the interest. There's the Light Heat program, the Good Neighbor Energy program, the gentleman who runs our credit and collections where people are having trouble paying. He also directs them to local charity and church groups as well for help there. We don't, we participate in the Light Heat and Good Neighbor Energy Fund. We'll look at doing more than that, but right now, there's not a, there's not a lot of, it has not been a lot of feedback in terms of ability to pay the bills, and the bills are well, they're not crazy bills as well. When I say bills, yeah, bills, customer bills. So we'll keep an eye on this, but it has not been a major problem for our customers right now.
I don't know, if you want to explain, you know, what's going on in Europe right now?
Love to.
I, it's almost like a customer revolt, and it all started with high-energy bills, and, you know, the implications of high-energy costs right now are basically, and it started, you know, in England.
Yep, started in England.
It's insane. So it, you know, what impact is that to, you know, decisions to go green and the impacts of going green all of the sudden, right? So--
Exactly, yeah.
But I think the implication for us is, do you want to have that happen here? And do you kind of, do we pull back? Is that, is that the statement? Again, you have to wait to see how the market bears out, but the implication is too fast, too soon, too hard might put us in the same boat, and Redding Light would be in the same--
It's just hard, lots of times, but--
But economically is, is impossible for some people. That's the reality.
There's a move over in England where the rate payers are not going to pay their bills. I wouldn't want to be Liz Truss today. Liz Truss, the new Prime Minister.
Oh, yeah, right, right, yeah.
I would not want to be her today.
Yeah, yeah. I think a couple of things, you know, one, again, we remain very sensitive to it. The nature of us being MLPs and the benefit, an MLP, right? And the benefit that that's allowed us to do, particularly be able to do longer-term contracts, right? You know, we have continued to modify our portfolio. Unlike the IOUs, which are in the boat of every six month, you know, they, from a regulatory perspective, are limited in terms of what they can do, you know? So they're, for the IOUs in New England, customers are facing significant increase in their bills because the six-month rolling contracts are basically, I'll have a slide here in a few minutes, but it's forward price curve, it's market price. And market price this time of the year would be, you know, $30 to $40 a megawatt hour, and it's over 100. It is, it is crazy. And as you, as you mentioned, Bob, the linkage, while electricity's not going across, you know, it's not transatlantic, the other fuels are, and that is creating significant pressure on New England in particular. And the other thing that we're watching carefully and working as a consortium with, between MLWIC and ENE, is to encourage ISO New England and the governors to allow some stockpiling of oil fuel because natural gas, which has traditionally been the buffer, is not going to be, well, I won't say it's not, less of it's going to be coming to New England because the higher prices are in Europe. And again, you know, a couple LNG tankers a month is, doesn't seem like a lot, but has a huge implication in terms of not only the cost in New England, but also the resiliency and the reliability. So that's a, it's a very complicated piece. And again, we take the mission seriously in terms of how we think about the infrastructure that Hameed and I work through. We'll talk a little bit more about storage in terms of the things that come through within territory generation. All the things that we're, that we're moving toward are in anticipation of the regional network being less reliable over time and more expensive, right? And so those, all those pieces are basically influencing the strategy that we're, that we started, you know, last year, but we're actually, you know, we're making, we're taking steps now. I will talk more about that, but you're exactly right. Yeah, please, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Point taken, but I think the escalating costs are, have to do with the cost of natural gas over Europe.
Yeah, exactly right, natural gas.
That's what's driving the rate shocks in Europe is the escalating cost of fossil fuels, not green energy.
It's also shutting off everything. It's twofold. It's not just, it's, it's, let's go, let's switch over--
Right, but the linkage of it to green energy, I think, is where, we need more information, but it's the escalating cost of natural gas that's driving the rate shock, not the escalating cost of alternative energy.
Yep, that's all.
Well, we'll talk, like flipping it around, it's like the alternative energy is the solution, not the problem.
Wow. Yeah.
So we'll talk about portfolio stuff here in a few moments. The last, just key piece, and we've talked about this in the past, and we've had some intermediate meetings, so we're working closely with the Town of Redding. We're actually, from the RMLD perspective, we're taking the stand that we are supportive of this Ash Street. So the picture basically is an overhead of Ash Street. You can see where the lower left-hand corner white building, that's the building we're in right now. But, but a different development of this area. The implications would be what, where does RMLD go? And the current strategy, again, this isn't fixed in stone, but we're open to economic development of this area. The property behind us, the Barbas family is also open to it. Obviously, these are economic decisions and timing, there's a lot of, this season's going into it, but the position that we are taking with the Town of Redding is that we as RMLD are very open to it. We are owned by the Town of Redding. The RMLD owns this building that we're in right now, owns the land under it, owns Station One, owns the operation center north of Station One. But at the end of the day, I think there's a benefit all around for the community and also for RMLD over the next five years to lay out and execute a plan where we'd end up in a different building, where we're all integrated into one building. It allows us, from an operations perspective, an operating perspective in the broad, not just, not just E&amp;O, but to be more efficient. So, bottom line, there's going to be, the Town asked to do an event. We haven't really opened the place up, but we will do for this one event, a neighborhood-focused meeting on the 6th of October. So the bottom line, I think, for you, the takeaway here, is we're making steady progress, and we are supportive of it, and we'll work together with the Town to see how it all plays out.
Yeah. I just want to make one comment. You say we're owned by the Town of Redding. Please remember, there are three outside towns that are in this district too.
Absolutely.
We are actually owned by the rate payers. That's the, that's the statement I've always lived with.
Good.
You know, they're not, you know, the rate payers are the ones that are paying the bills here.
Yep. Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think that there's a, there's a longer-term strategy, and one of the things we'll talk about in one of the other sessions on that very topic is, is our intention is to, you know, we're here to serve the rate payers, and the service we provide, the basis of that is reliable, low-cost, non-carbon energy. But you're exactly right, you know, the customers in North Redding, Linfield, Wilmington, as well as Redding are all very important to us. One of the things that we'll talk about a little later, not too much today, but there is a strategy that we are developing whereby the other MLPs, we are contiguous with Peabody, Danvers, not totally, anyways, there's a group of us that are all very contiguous, Wakefield, Middleton, and it's going to be important for us as a group to work more closely together because we all come under the MLP statute, and that provides us benefits. So there's a scale, please, so you're exactly right. There's a, there's a super-regional MLP strategy here that allows all of us to be more reliable, more resilient, lower cost, and then at some point in time with these IRA, the inflation-reduction funds that act to, at some point in time, maybe even pull in Raleigh and Georgetown and Groveland as well. So there's a, there's a bigger picture, so you're exactly right. It's not, this is not a Redding-focused piece, there's a, there's a bigger, there's a bigger strategy here. Anyways, that's the quick interim update.
We're going to move on to the 2022 NEPA Annual Conference Report.
So, as you, you know, so I attended the NEPA meeting, as did four of the, actually, the five of us did. And what, there are a lot of important things, so this, this was meant to be more of a discussion, So this was meant to be more of a discussion, so I want to... I'll walk through what I think are a couple of key trends. All of the different presentations had a different focus, but I think, if I could, I basically tried to do a quick summary in individual slides. The individual presentations are on the NEPA website, if you guys would like. I'll arrange with Erica to send the individual presentations to you, including the speech that was done by Mr. Rush, Barney Rush. But I just want to hit a couple of highlights, because what I tried to do is pull out the key themes and then also the implications for RMLD. And so this is meant to be a discussion. The takeaway I also have is the direction that we are trying to go. The vision that we have put in place now over the past couple of months is, I think, consistent with what many of the speakers presented. So, you know, the keynote, right? Peter's key things, right? His key slide was decarbonization, digitization, and decentralization. So we all understand the decarbonization piece, right? The digitization is a key piece. We talked about it a little bit in the CAB meeting, but data is becoming a more and more critical piece of how we actually operate and manage RMLD, but also to serve the customers. So that digitization is more monitoring voltages and currents and temperatures of equipment in the field. Hamed started the program a couple of years back. We're going to accelerate that, but we're going to put more sensors out on the field. That's a data piece. We're in the process of moving toward an AMI, a next-generation AMI and MDM system. That's useful from a billing perspective. It's useful for a load forecast perspective, et cetera. So there's a whole digitization piece. We, when we recruited the Director of IT, it became much more clear that that position... There's a couple of pieces of that position, and so we're going to create a Director of Enterprise Data, Enterprise Information, but somebody to help us think through and actually implement this whole digitization theme. There's a big piece here, and it's going to take some time to put that together, but that's a key thing that Peter mentioned, and we can see it. That's what we're trying to do within RMLD already. That decentralization is decentralization of generation assets. So we're moving, you know, as we've mentioned several times before, we've talked about within-territory generation, and that's what he was talking about here. So there's a key piece here. I'll just kind of walk you through the big pieces that I saw in each one of these. We can go into as much detail and discussion. You guys all had different observations as well, but I thought Peter did a pretty good view. The book that... I had a chance to read the book afterwards.
You got the book?
Yep. Yep. That book was actually pretty good. It hits on all these key points. The, you know, Joe's presentation, right, from the New England Clean Energy Group, you know, he was focusing on taking action, right, the things that we're doing. He focused on those implications for RMLD, right, learn new expertise, right? And all of these, there's several, that accelerate external communications, right? He talked about in that fifth bullet from the bottom, make your customers know what you're doing. That communication to the outside is a key... We saw that in several different places. So that's part of the reason why we're being more aggressive in terms of external communication and, of course, more aggressive in terms of internal communication. That commercial fusion energy was neat. I tied that back into things that we're doing, and that's a decade down the road, right, commercialization in the 2030 timeframe, right? So that's, you know, that's 10 to 15 years down the road. But those are meant to be, you know, when they get that up and running, those are 75-megawatt, you know, modular systems. And there'll be a discussion in terms of, do we want to do a fusion modular system within our territory or not? That's a different discussion for a later date. But the concept of having distributed generation, remember that decentralization from the previous one, and our goal of within-territory generation, this fits. So we're pointed in the right direction in terms of what we're trying to do. Ted talked about storage. I thought his chart here was actually pretty interesting. Good, I liked it. But, you know, I think the industry agrees that storage is a critical piece of the intermittent nature of renewables going forward. And at the end of the day, the other chart that he had that I almost put in place of this was that chart that basically, it was a cost on the left-hand side and duration on the right-hand side, and it has... Well, actually, I put the number in here, right? It's targeting 10% of lithium-ion cost, that fourth bullet down. Form in terms of dollars per kilowatt hour is that 10% of lithium-ion cost. The challenge with lithium-ion right now, we're doing projects, we're continuing to do projects. We've talked about those, we're working on programs. You know, Hamed and I are working on the Fordham Road one. It'll probably be... And we'll come back to you with an update on that, probably next, either in the October, November one. But we'll probably increase that 5-megawatt system to a 10-megawatt system. But that's a peak shaving system. That's a peak management system. And what this stuff is really talking about is a time-shifting use. So time-shifting use for storage. So you generate in the afternoon and then you discharge in the evening. And what that really means is while solar, again, solar is great and it fits into the portfolio and has a lot of benefits, but we want to be able to have solar be available in the evening. And so you have a solar generator and then you have a storage system. So now we have two pieces, and both of those cost money. And if these guys can pull off what they can pull off, right, and this timing looks pretty good, but if it's 10%, then that's a 10% premium on our existing energy cost, that's workable. 100% one is hard to take, right? So that's why this is particularly interesting in terms of the storage. They're doing pilot projects in 2024. I had a chance to talk to Ted afterwards. We share a similar alumni, so I'm going to work with him to see if we can't become part of his pilot or early commercialization sites. We're a big MLP, right? You know, we're not grid, but he wants somebody that's going to be nimble, so this could be interesting for us. But the bigger picture is that storage is important and going forward, and if they can get the cost structure down, that's a win for us as RMLD and any other MLPs. The legislative update, critically important. I think I've talked to a couple of you guys individually. The massive, and I use the word massive news that came out, was that Inflation Reduction Act. And the implication for MLPs is there's an investment tax credit and a production tax credit for generation assets that we, as a not-for-profit entity, could not have access to. And this allows us, so it not only moves it back up to 30% for the investment tax credit, it's currently at 23%, but it also allows MLPs, us, to participate in it as a direct cash grant to us. So part of the reason why we've restructured the finance team is individuals that have experience with this kind of grant-type stuff and this finance-type stuff. That's a 30% discount. There's another 10% on top of that if we do brownfield stuff. There is 30 to 50%. I mean, we're talking tens of millions of dollars available to us as an MLP that we didn't have access to. So this, you know, Elizabeth's summary was massive for MLPs. You know, this particular one, Barney Rush's, the Regional Energy Challenges, this is the one where he basically went through his speech, right? And I'll admit, when I heard it, like, I cut little nuggets. It was interesting. But when I went back and tried to summarize, I mean, I reread it four or five times, and I really worked hard to synthesize his key points. But as you dig deeper into it, that is a very deep... That individual has seen a lot. There's a lot of wisdom in what he has shared. I would encourage you to go back and read a few times. This summary is actually pretty good, but go back and look at his notes. Again, take action, right? You know, he's talking about there that be realistic regarding cost and time to transition and to realize the benefits, take the long view. And I think, you know, we're moving down that similar path. And again, another guy that talked about customer engagement, right? That's a particularly... That was a deep piece. And then...
One smart guy.
Yeah.
I did not feel... I felt like he was one... You have to say, that was one smart guy speaking up on that stage. I was like, oh, my goodness.
Expression is with the airport, right? It was just like, wow. But take a look at it. There's really good stuff there. And then Mike Highland talking about public EV chargers. And there's a lot of pieces, there are a lot of nuggets in there. I won't walk through each one of these, but there are lessons that come out for us as well as we are starting to roll out our public chargers. Again, public chargers, you know, most, as he mentioned and we've talked about before, most of the charging is done at home, but there's still a role for public charging in our territory. So we're going to chase that down. You know, I'll pause. There was so much stuff in there, but my takeaway is there's a theme of storage, there's a theme of taking action, there's a theme of customer coordination, and the basic stuff that I think Peter hit in his very first one, you know, the decarbonization, digitization, and decentralization, that kind of carried through. It reflects what we are right now trying to do at RMLD. So I think the themes we saw here, the things that we're pushing on... So I walked out of that NEPA meeting encouraged that we're pointed in the right direction. That's a summary from me. I don't know if you guys want to add any additional comments on the NEPA meeting.
The only thing I'd like to add is that Mike... I like Mike Highland's speech, you know?
Which was the first one or the second one?
He also introduced himself as the new executive director, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so he's the one that really caught my attention.
Good?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Karen, do you have a moment?
Sure.
Thank you, manager. Karen Herrick, Reading Select Board.
Why don't you come to the...
Oh, good, thank you.
Can they hear you?
I'm so excited about that. I just wanted to ask whether you need help from the ratepayer communities on this legislative update, active, proactive advocate.
Do we need help? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is that a state rep?
Yeah. So one of the... So yes, we are. So some of the things that we're about to do, particularly within-territory assets, generation assets, so I'll lay out a little bit more detail. We've got a couple of meetings coming up, but there is... So there's nothing confidential about it. There is a landfill in Wilmington, 79 acres, that's linked to a Superfund site that's just starting remediation. There's a lot of history associated with that site. There have been a lot of people that have tried to do something with that site. We, as RMLD, are uniquely positioned to turn that into something of value. And our view is to put a solar array on it at the encouragement of the town manager and the CAB representative from Wilmington. Six weeks ago now, we sat down and said, look, we ought to figure out a way to make this happen. So the town manager introduced us to a couple of individuals. We've had meetings, several meetings with several of them, and to all of them, including some of the local environmental groups, all of them want us to do something with that land that is positive for the community, as opposed to just sitting in a big heap of partially contaminated soils. And that fits into... So there are going to be some legislative... So we're also working with a regulatory individual at ENE who is... Who used to do this work before he ended up at ENE, used to do this for Covanta, very similar. And so there will be some legislative things that we'll need to have happen. I think the other piece is trying to, you know, so it also fits into the Investment Inflation Reduction Act. So that project is probably a $20 million project. At $20 million, it is worth doing from a ratepayer perspective because it would basically put our... The net-net, all said and done, we'd be somewhere in the range of less than $20 per megawatt hour because it's within territory, it's solar, it's got... There's a whole bunch of... I mean, before we put any incentives, we take that and cut it in half with just incentives, which is very doable based on what we've learned here. You know, we're $10 a megawatt hour, which is some of our early, early, early nuclear deals. So we're going to pursue that, and that'll be a legislative piece. I think the other element, you know, one of the things that we've been pushing on in the past are air-source heat pumps, and we've been looking at those as part of electrification, decarbonization. But we're going to modify the messaging on that, and it's also, it's an energy efficiency play. And, you know, I know Commissioner Talbot's been, you know, he continually reminds us, it's great to be, you know, non-carbon, et cetera, but the best thing you can do is use less energy to begin with, right? And that goes back to the efficiency piece, right? How do you become more energy efficient? So the nature of air-source heat pumps is they are more efficient than natural gas and oil-based. So there's the regulatory compliance piece of it, but there's also the efficiency. So I think there's going to be a lot of communications with the town of Reading and the town of North Reading and Wilmington. I haven't had as deep discussions lately with Linfield, but in Gate, so a lot more coordination with them in terms of the communication to the individual communities and then doing joint projects on municipal buildings, et cetera. This little, this little, this little massive Inflation Reduction Act is an accelerant for us to do more within-territory assets on municipal buildings. I mean, it's a whole bunch of pieces. And part of the reason for bringing a different type of people into the organization is to help us pursue this strategy. That make sense?
Yeah, so we are in close contact on energy issues with our delegation.
Yep.
By the way, our difference in Wilmington.
Yes, yes.
Some overlap with New Reading.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do we see part of moving this forward? Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the reminder.
Just one comment.
Sure.
I've heard of a company out of Watertown that is trying to create wireless charging.
Yes.
Which I don't know how they're going to do that, but that's, you know, I've heard that somebody's out there trying to do that.
Well, you got... I mean, so that technology exists for mobile phones. You know, it's... You can put it on a little pod, a little puck. So, yeah, at a larger scale for cars. So the technology exists. The question is the commercialization.
Yeah.
A couple of other things that we're doing right now is there's a... And they did a big announcement today, a company called Spark Charge, that are trying to do mobile battery chargers. There's a whole business strategy that's probably going to work, and so they're talking with us, and they're talking with two MLPs on the southern, on the south part of 128 to be their kind of hubs. So again, another crazy thing. And then the other element is, you know, it's not... So the Northfield Hydro Facility, Pump Storage Facility, just installed bidirectional EV chargers. And so we're probably independent of them, but we'll explore some of those bidirectional. We talked about it kind of briefly a couple of months back. Again, it's not... It's a 23, 24 event, not 22 event. But again, thinking very differently about how to use these storage assets that are coming in, not only the ones that we invest in, but the ones that our customers are investing in in the form of EVs. That's probably happening sooner rather than later. I know we've talked about it in the past, but this EV thing is accelerating, and it creates an opportunity for us. Again, it's part, and it's going to hit that decentralization, digitization piece that Peter talked about in his presentation.
Okay. So how is your EV car working so far?
I now have 36,000 miles on my EV car. I have replaced the wipers once, the cabin air filter once. Haven't touched the brakes, probably won't. It's... My bill is 20... My gas bill is 20% of what it was. And that was when gas was, you know, 3.49 a gallon. You know, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, but part of the motivation to do that was economic, but part of it was also to learn. And I have... I mean, I go around the different chargers. I don't do it as much as I used to, but, you know, just try different chargers, like, you know, what's the experience, you know, the ones that come down from the pole, DC Fast Charge, I mean, all sorts of stuff, but just to learn, right? Because we're trying to figure out how to make it easier for our customers, this little Spark Charge thing. So, end of the day, there's different... Depending upon what your use case is, but I have come to believe that for a lot of people, EVs are... They're going to come fast, and they're going to come from an economic perspective. Yes, I understand people argue about they're more expensive. Well, you know, if you do like-for-like, not so much. But anyways, that's a whole different topic. But from an operating cost perspective, massively different. I'd do it in a heartbeat again.
The reason I ask that is Mike talked about... Mike Highland talked about his experiences.
Yeah, what did he say?
With the EV. And I didn't see that summarized any way yet, so he talked about his experience. That's why I asked that question.
Yeah. Well, his experience was primarily from charging, right? He's trying to put a charging network in, right? And he was... So there's lessons on his charging network that we're adopting, right? And I put those in the notes for us. Yeah, I mean, you know, the customers are going to decide in terms of how fast they're going to go, but on a national basis, and again, you guys know, right? 2035, the current law is you will not be able to sell an internal combustion light-duty vehicle in Massachusetts.
Mm-hmm.
And that's coming.
Okay.
So, I mean, we'll talk next... So again, I mean, I like EVs. So, I mean, we'll talk next, we'll, so again, I mean, I like EVs, I think they work. I'm a believer. But I, you know, two years ago, it was five years down the road. But, and that's my personal experience.
Okay.
All right.
So, what's the one with our policy review and bullying basis? The first policy tonight is review 15, sexual harassment. What are you most present of discussion?
Sure.
Would you read it?
Okay, fine. Would you want both or just one?
Just for 15.
Just the 16 or 15?
Yeah, read them both.
Okay, well, let me, I'll read 15 and get discussion. Right. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy 15, sexual harassment revision four, as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Okay, thank you. And is there any discussion about policy 15? Another question I have is why'd you go from HR manager to HR director?
That's just because that's the title, the, well, the title is HR manager. I mean, I mean, the, the title of HR, the formal title in our org structure, that's been that way for a while, has been HR director, so we just made it consistent with the, the current title is.
And that was the last couple of policies we reviewed. We did the same thing.
Okay, so we're ahead. There's no other discussion?
Was there any changes?
Yeah, the changes were small. You know, basically, there was that change, and then there was just a little bit more clarification in terms of the procedure if the complaint is against the general manager. So, just clarification. It was written, the legal team put that together and made those edits. But it's, it's not, there's no, there's no significant changes to the sexual harassment. It was pretty well-written in the beginning.
All those in favor?
Hold on one minute. Under the, where you got the Board of Commissioners, there's something added there. What, why does that, we had additional things under investigation in accordance, oh, because we got a chapter. What's section five of C? What, what is that? This is on page three, under C on page three.
Yep.
I just found it.
So that, section VC, pages four and five.
Right, well, no, it's on, it's three. It's on page three, it's the bottom paragraph.
Right, but it directs you to section VC.
That's, it refers to section, okay.
So it, it basically.
All right.
So it goes back to, it's part of the clarification. If there are complaints or allegations involving the general manager, then the chair of the Board of Commissioners, since the general manager reports to the Board of Commissioners.
Can we add in there that maybe section, because I, I didn't know what, what that referred to. Section, you know, V7 of this, of this policy, can we add that, can we add that in after the section VC, and just say, "Add of this policy?" Because I don't know what section that's referring to. It seems to just be out there by itself.
Any investigation will be conducted.
Oh, 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 you mean that last, you mean the bull, you mean this little cover page?
No, I'm looking at the changes you made here.
Where, where it says, any investig, the new line, "Any investigation will be conducted in accordance with section five subsection C."
Of this policy.
Oh, you want to just put "of this policy"?
Of this policy.
Oh, sure.
So that's just, it's clarify what section that is.
Sure.
Because that could be section five, since they have the Green Movement, Green Movement Pacino manual. And if everybody's accepting, you can accept that as part of the main motion. You okay? Unless anybody objects.
Moving around the room.
Okay, so all in favor of the amendments to this policy, including Phil's?
No, it's being accepted as part of the main motion. You just, you just know, unless there's objection, it's part of the main motion. So all you do is just say that, you know, in accordance with the main motion. You just one vote. You're, there's no amendment on the floor.
It's not an amendment?
No, it's not an amendment. It's part of the main motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all those in favor of the motion?
Ms. Pacino, I?
No, but I.
Was I?
I must tell you, in the history, that has, that section has come into play once.
Really?
Yes. And I give you details at some other place, some other time.
Policy 16, those who are working.
All right. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy 16, violence in the workplace, revision three, as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second.
The changes are, I'll just review.
Hey, go ahead.
For everyone. The human resources manager title was changed to human resources director throughout. And in section two, subsection two A, the definition of threat was revised to clarify that RMLD will use objective and subjective standards, taking into account all facts and circumstances to determine whether a threat has occurred. And subsection two C, verbiage was added to expand the definition of weapon, to include realistic-looking fake firearms. In section four, pre-employment screening, subsection four A, verbiage was changed from RMLD should to RMLD strives to. Also verbiage stating, "In history, a frequent job changes was removed from the list of red flags." Weird that was ever in there. In subsection four B1, verbiage outlining permissible questions relating to criminal history was removed per current law and best practice. I mean, well, let's read the motion, and then.
I did read the motion already.
Wait a minute.
Motion's already been read.
You, you can't ask that? That's law?
Mm-hmm.
From Jan?
Yeah, we do, we do a.
You do a background check.
We do a background check, yeah.
Yeah, you do a background check, and usually it's a criminal history check.
Yeah, so that's part of it.
So why is that, well, I guess.
In terms of the interview questions.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, it, it, yeah, well, I'm just saying, it, it, in part of the pre-employment, you do a criminal.
We do, and we still do those.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's not part of the interview questions.
Well, that doesn't say interview, it says screening for red flags, pre-employment screen.
Yeah, okay.
I just don't want to put in something in there, you know, for, you're doing a pre-employment check, you're.
We're definitely looking at criminal.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So it seems to exclude, well.
If I realize, I'll take one.
Oh, man, it's part.
It says, "For the document, it's illegal for RMLD to ask certain questions about a job applicant's or even employee's criminal record."
Yeah. You have the right to find out if they're felon.
The ability of RMLD to obtain.
Yeah, read that.
Access to criminal record information by the Massachusetts Criminal History Systems Board under the Criminal Information Act is limited to that which is necessary to perform the relevant criminal justice or statutory duties.
So keep, read the whole thing.
Criminal history information is available from private sources, also may be limited. Thus, it will be important for RMLD to assess an applicant's suitability for position or propensity for workplace violence based on appropriate inquiries relating to the employee's past work experience, such as the employee's attitude in the workplace, the ability to get along well with others, or history of threatening, bullying, or harassing behavior.
Yeah, I think the key thing is the certain questions. So we're, we're not taking away the background check. We still do that.
Right. It just, it just, it was just seem, seemed that it was, other things were creeping into it, violence in the workplace type scenario there for, but that's, you know, I thought you were restricting the ability to even.
No, no.
Look at somebody in that.
No, we just, from a legal perspective, there's things that we can and can't ask in an interview process, but we still, that second paragraph down there was to indicate that we still, it is imperative for us to, to understand the propensity for any workplace violence as part of our pre-screening offering. So to how, the mechanisms that we have to do it, we have, from a legal perspective, we have to do a little bit differently than we did before, including asking in interviews. So we don't, we're not taking away the responsibility just to how we can do it from a legal perspective. And then the fake-looking firearms is pretty straightforward.
I think it's more than fair to make a line that said propensity for changing jobs for building.
Yeah.
Okay, so we already read the motion on violence in the workplace.
Motion's been read, yep.
And seconded it.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any further discussion?
Ms. Pacino, I?
Or Lady B to I?
Taber I.
Mr. Colter I.
That's for 01, at the end. Great, we're going to look into the greater resources report.
Excellent.
Yep. You want the motion? Okay, okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners, on the recommendation of the City Advisory Board, vote to accept the interim general manager's recommendation to execute a contract with First Light Power for Energy, including associated certificates from an existing hydro facility in, in Connecticut, contingent on appropriate environmental justice due diligence.
All right, very good. So we're.
I heard Bob second.
So we'll talk, just a little bit of a portfolio update and some of the things that we've been working on, and then we'll talk about the hydro piece in particular. And then in October, our, what we normally do is we do a budget review, so an operating budget, capital budget, and obviously power supply is part of the operating budget. So just to give you guys an idea what's coming down the road, since power supply is a significant piece of the budget, just wanted to give a little bit of sense of what that looks like ahead of time. So, as you guys know, the, the RMLD team has, continues to, right, since it's a big piece of the budget, we pursue aggressively power supply contracts, right? Contracts expire, we have to keep filling the portfolio. It's an ongoing process. That chart on the left-hand side there, the, this line here that starts at 120, the, this basically is dollars per megawatt hour, and across the bottom of this is years, is basically 2022 through 2040, just to give you an idea of the horizon. And these are basically dollars per megawatt hour. So these dollars per megawatt, dollars per megawatt hour are energy only. There are other costs tied to power supply, certificate retirement, transmission and capacity, and then there's energy. And this is just the energy portion. So as you can see, this kind of purple, not purple, but this teal-colored line is the forward price curve. And you can see right now in 2022, 23, it is significantly high, and then it drops off. It, it's theoretically going to dip, still at a fairly high number in 2025, and then start growing back again. So that's the, that's, we call that the open market. That's the forward price curve. The, this, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but the open, the all contracts piece is, is basically all of our existing contracts, our entire portfolio. And you can see we're right in the mid, you know, mid to high 40s, which is good. We've been there for a while. And then you can see the red is the nuclear component, the blue is the hydro component, the yellow is the solar component, and then the green is the wind component. Now, these are existing contracts in our portfolio. We expect when the offshore wind comes in that that green line will come down. And there's a question in terms of how fast offshore wind gets built, et cetera. We will buy wind projects, right? It's part of our, it's, it's going to be part of our portfolio. We, as you guys remember from last year, on the Vineyard Wind Project, we have a, we are part of a consortium to buy a small piece of it. As, as those develop, we will chase more and more of those. The concept, I just want to leave you guys here, is that, you know, we pursued nuclear. Back in December, we, we basically transitioned to make nuclear instead of being 50% of the portfolio to, portfolio to be closer to 30, to, we split a maximum 40, but we're, it'll grow up to the high 20s, low 30s. We were trying to balance, there's only three nuclear reactors left in New England. Two were in Millstone in Connecticut, and one is in Seabrook. Right now, our portfolio is about two-thirds, one, or two-thirds Seabrook, and then one-third Millstone. What we're trying to do is, is balance, but, you know, make those more 50/50, just in terms of geographic and physical separation. We continue to work with Dominion, but they are, they are pricing right now above forward price curve. So we're not executing any nuclear projects right now into the portfolio. We'll continue looking at it. And the Millstone, due to a arrangement that, between Millstone, which is in the state of Connecticut, and the state of Connecticut, the state of Connecticut keeps all those certificates until 2029. Okay. So we're continuing to work on it. The TFAs, you guys remember, you know, two years ago, even last year, we had, we had, we have existing TFA contracts, they go out through 2024. We did a couple of them last year, we did three of them last year. We haven't done any of them this year. And, and the reason being is that that model, that mechanism was ideal when you had a fairly stable market. So 18, 19, even 20, you know, prices went up and down, but they didn't go up and, you know, they went up and down between, you know, 30 and 45, 30 and $50, not 120 or 150, et cetera. Anyways, all said and done, despite our efforts to update the assumptions and running the model on a regular basis, the model generates, you know, 150-plus dollars per megawatt hour prices that, while we might experience them with our open market position, we don't want to contract with them quite yet. So we continue to look at it. We're not going to walk away from it. But there's, it doesn't, it, it, it's not economically a good thing for us to lock in high prices right now. If we feel them, that's fine. We talked about hydro before, hydro Quebec before, that 9.4 megawatts. We, our intention and our plan is to start taking energy starting in January of 2024. So we have the transmission capability, which is great, but we need a generator on the, on the end of that line in Canada. So while we tend to, as RMLD, go out and generate projects and opportunities on our own, we do where we can do projects through E and E. We have several of them in our portfolio, but only several. But they've taken the initiative to, they've kind of put a collection of us MLPs together, and they're trying to establish that initial supply discussions with Canadians. So we're going to let them continue to drive that, but that's the next key milestone for us. So we've got 18 months to do it. We're, we're aggressive on it, and that'll fit into the portfolio, but that's a quick update. We also, again, in terms of exploring different things, we looked at load following with Next Era. We had done a load following program back in 2018. It, it was, because the market was very different back then, it was viewed as marginal. Right now, it has a significant premium to it. If we were to do load following, the idea basically is we'd be 100% hedged with them, but it comes at a premium. That premium is pretty significant. I mean, it's really significant. And we've, we've worked very well with Next Era, and they've worked hard to, we've, we've done creative things to, to try and figure out a way to make us, make it more attractive to, to us and our ratepayers, but it's just, it's too high of a premium right now. So we're in good shape for the next two years, 23, 20. We're in good shape going forward, but the big push, you know, the high, the high numbers are winter of 20, you know, this upcoming winter, and then the winter of 23, 24. We're 85 and 83% hedge respectively. We don't have a lot, you know, we're, we're in good shape. We were trying to get closer to 90, and we will continue to do that. We'll talk about a project right now, but that won't start until 2025. So we're not nervous about, on the next two years, but we always are trying to figure out a way to, to fit more low power into it. Quick snapshot, I won't spend too much time on this, but, you know, we've got a mix of hydro and solar and wind in our, in our portfolio come up, things that we've been working on this year. You know all of these, that's just a quick snapshot. But I want to talk about the hydro, right? So this is, this is First Light, basically Falls Village. It is a nine-megawatt facility on the, it's on the western, it's a river on the western part of Connecticut. Again, we're trying to think about geographic spreading. So we've got some plants on the Housatonic, but also on the Connecticut River. They have different watersheds. So again, just the idea of spreading risk. In this particular one, for administrative efficiency for both the supplier, which is First Light, and us, we basically agreed that it would be best for both of us to take 100% of the output. It's not a big facility, it's only, it's a little, you know, it's nine megawatts. It generates 38,000 megawatt hours a year. It is run-of-the-river. So it's, it's sizable, right? It's, it's a little bit over 5% of our annual portfolio, so it's good. It's a 15-year contract, it has class one certificates, it fits right in the middle of our, you know, remember that previous slide we had put up there in terms of where the blue line was? It's, it's about 50% higher than our, our overall average, but it still fits into the hydro portfolio. So the pricing is good. It's particularly good right now. It would be another long-term contract, 15 years. First Light, like Gravity, is very reputable. First Light happens to be bigger than, than Gravity. The owners, the financial owners of First Light are our pension funds, they happen to be convention, Canadian pension funds, but they like the idea of, and they, so we worked well on the pricing. And the pitch for us was, we're a reliable paying client, we'll do a long-term contract, and we'll, we'll administratively try to make it work for both of us where we take 100% of the output. So anyways, we, we think it's a good program. It fits into the portfolio, it's hydro, it's got all the things we like, and we'd like your, your permission to execute a contract. It'll take, and the other thing is, as you saw in the motion, you know, based on tonight's discussion, we will, as we have done on the other ones, we will do a environmental just due diligence like we've done before, and those have worked out really well. In fact, these guys, we did one on, we did a project extension on one of those other ones that they had, and they had never done a due diligence on it, so they're particularly excited to see the results of the due diligence. But anyways, that's a small point, but it's important. So.
All right, thank you.
Questions?
Very small question, just on, on the, that last bit of terminology that you used. What do you call the due diligence? What's the term you're using for it?
Environmental due diligence?
Thank you. Because it, because it says environmental justice due diligence. I know, that's like a certain type of thing if a power plant is in a low-income neighborhood.
Yeah.
And is admitting things. But when you're talking about hydro, you're talking about, see, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Good, thank you.
So maybe, maybe friendly amendment, just.
Yeah, we read it.
So just drop the word "justice"?
The motion, friendly, whatever the terminology is to, we don't need.
It's environmental due diligence.
Environmental due diligence, instead of environmental justice due diligence.
Very good, thanks.
We can accept that as part of the main motion, unless there's objection from anybody.
No objection.
We'll be making just one vote. Yeah.
So, all those in favor? We don't have to read it again, right? We don't have to read it again if we are not contesting?
It's just one vote. Just one vote.
All right.
Yeah, I'm in favor. One more, James?
Yep. You got that? Okay, great.
401, thanks.
Okay. The last piece, again, this is just to kind of set the stage. So, we are going to present to you the 2023 budget. Obviously, for all the reasons we know, right? And while we, there's upward pressure on the budgets. Part of it is, you know, part of it is the nature of more of our portfolio is renewable, is non-carbon. And if you remember, right? Many of those are on the higher end. So, anyways, there's upward pull as we become more renewable. We like it. It's good, more non-carbon. So, 2021, we are around $60 million. 2023 will be around $68 million. But if you look at that center column of the 2022 estimate, while we originally were expecting to be around $64 million, $65 million in 2022, we still have exposure, right? 10% to 15% of our portfolio is open market. And so, as we've talked about many times over the past, you know, several months, our actual costs are going to be higher than we had budgeted. Those are all passed through the customer. There's no markup. We've worked hard to communicate since January, these costs coming up. Net-net, as we've talked about before, that 12% that we anticipated relative to 2021 to 2022, actual bills from the customers, the customers are aware of that. We are just coming out of the peak. Remember, August is the highest bill month typically, just given the combination of usage, et cetera. So, anyways, all said and done, just somewhat over 3% in 2023 and then 2024 will be another 2%. Again, these are really low numbers in the context of the grand market. We'll continue to refine these. But this is good news. So, we'll get more details when we put it in the final budget. But as we kind of look at it, this is encouraging. So, anyways, that's just, it's just data right now. So, all right, that's the update from IRT. Thank you.
And Mr. Jafari, our Director of E and O, will give us an E and O report.
And then Hameed, will, as you want to go to slides, just let us know. Will advance.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. I'm going to give you a report on the reliability, the status of our reliability. I guess we are due for another one, the new one. So, let's review the RMLD's reliability status as it is now, the status that it is now to this year, especially with the challenges that we've had, number of storms as well as the supply chain disruption issues and here, there. So, see where we are and where we're going with it and what the strategy would be like here moving forward. Because as we are meeting the new challenges that we are in today now, we're going to have to keep looking ahead and also be proactive, right? And reactive. So, we're changing our strategy a little bit that I'm going to go over these slides and explain to you exactly what it is, the facts, and, you know, and what we're going to do moving forward in order to be better prepared and make sure their reliability is going to stay sound and is going to be as good as it's been in the past. So, that's what the goal is. So, let's review the system reliability, what a good system reliability means to the community and what it entails. Basically, any good reliable system should have good maintenance program. That's the key for the reliability that we do have. We have 10-point reliability maintenance program that we are pursuing and that was created a long time ago in order to make sure we grab the ball by the horn and then we stay as reliable as we could. The outage management strategy, that's another component which is key to system reliability. We employed, actually, we hired the surveillance in order to get the package outage management system from them, an outage management system that is a shell on the SCADA system. It has been assisting our dispatchers and engineers tremendously in order to locate the outages and manage the outages and restore the power to the people as fast as they can. Another component is system planning. We did the system planning study back in 2015 and that created basically the roadmap for the next 20 years, that what we need to do and what pattern we should follow. And we've been updating that, you know, internally. We continue to build up on those by doing more studies in order to make sure that, you know, we're still on the right track. So, and it's going on. So, the next item is the system automation plan. And, you know, we have a roadmap, technology roadmap that was developed back in 2015, 2016. And having said that, we basically mapped out for the next 15, 20 years as we are making those improvements, how we're going to implement the automation. Because having a good automation in place, that's going to cut down the outages. And then, you know, that's part of the goal. So, we mapped out the future of RMLD's system like pieces of puzzles that every year we put a piece together in order to make sure at the end of the day you have the full picture and everything works together in order to help maintain the reliability. So, the reliability, the long story, the reliability is still strong. We are in very good, we remain reliable and the reliability is in good status. The next slide, please. These are the number of 10 reliability maintenance programs that we could develop back in 2015. And, you know, some of them are basically daily, some of them monthly, some of them annually. And those programs, we have a good system. We have prioritized basically the maintenance programs and, you know, we adjust them as we go. We try to do them all and we are on target with those. So, every year, we review those and we're going to see that, you know, which areas we've been very successful, which areas we need to put more attention to. And basically, we adjust the plans accordingly. And this is the model that, you know, most other utilities now they're following pretty much. Some utilities, IOUs, they're doing some of those, some they're not doing. But this is basically following the best business practices and that's what we are doing. And some of the other units, actually, I get a call from them, what do you do here, there? We change information and they're using this model now because they want to stay ahead of the game like us. So, the next one, please. This one, these are the reliability indices. It's like your blood pressure, basically tells you what the health status of the system is. As you could tell, the system average interruption duration on the left and also the system average frequency index were well below the national and regional averages. The regional average is in green, the line green, and the blue line is the national averages. Now, I want to mention something. These numbers are based on the 2021. The 2022 numbers, benchmarking numbers, they're going to come out in March of 2023. So, even though that, you know, those numbers, you know, still haven't come out for this year and I know everybody's up because, you know, with the drought and all the issues that, you know, our communities in Massachusetts they have experienced. So, we expect to see higher numbers. Therefore, the curve is going to go up. But we still on those two, which is looking at globally at the system. We are doing very well. We are still very low. So, that, and I expect that to be maintained at the same level going to the, closing to the end of the year. The next slide, please. This slide, however, it's a little bit different. And that's what caught my attention. And Greg and I, we discussed this in details and to see that, you know, okay, what have we got to do? Since we both like really the data analytic and, you know, as you know, the colleges now they offer the major called data science.
Data analytics.
And I'm glad that, you know, they are doing it because this is basically our interest, the engineers. We love data. We love to do analysis and see that, you know, what these numbers really mean to us and, you know, what are we going to do with the numbers? So, I took it upon myself to see that, you know, why that number is going up. These are the customer average interruption frequency, interruption duration index, which is basically the difference of this number as opposed to the system. System is looking at when you have at the globally, you know, you have substation out or you have a feeder out. But this customer average interruption duration, which is giving you some indication of what every customer basically in the system, they've been experiencing the outages. These are the pockets of outages that, you know, you see because a transformer, let's say, is blown because, you know, because of the animal contact or a switch has blown because of animal contact. So, these are localized outages. When you add them up, it seems like it's a lot, but it's not really a lot. So, overall, we're doing very well. However, if you look at the chart on the right, the bar chart, you've got to see the cause of these outages actually going back to three categories. The equipment, which is going up with respect to the five-years average, the blue bar charts you see in the equipment now, we have 20. So far, we are not even, we haven't even closed the year yet. But five-years average to the month been 23 and now we are above that. And I'm going to tell you exactly why we are above that. Tree trimming, you know, the five-year average been 33, but we are still below, but still that number is on the rise. And this is the focus of our attention, that what we're going to do and how we're going to strategize moving forward. The wildlife, the five-years average been 28 and this year so far, we are 16. So, I started going over the numbers and going back to the trouble reports and see what is the common denominator to all of these problems. And interestingly enough, the common denominator, they all go back to the trees. Because the animals, when the, you know, when the trees, they're growing toward the energized part of the system or equipment, any apparatus, they create a path so they can jump and, you know, make the jump easier for the squirrel to jump, you know, when, you know, there is a tree limb that it's getting very close to the transformer and there you go. Even though the cause is mentioned as animal, but really the root cause been the tree because the trees have been cut back enough. And, you know, we haven't, you know, been able to do as we would like to do normally. So, it was interesting for me. So, as the next slide, could you please go? Okay. You see that that big pipe chart is telling you exactly what the major problems be with all of those three categories, equipment trees and wildlife. The common denominator to all of those are trees. If you could show that, you know, video a little bit, I want you to focus that.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to see that, you know, the tree is practically touching the wires and look what it does to it.
Yeah.
Just watch this for a little while. And now you're going to see that the fault, it's an arc, it's coming down to the ground. You see that? It's what, now, that is what we're trying to avoid. Because God forbid, if somebody is leaning against that or his dog is walking, you know, near that tree, you could expect that, you know, you could see that, you know, what is going to happen. So, it's very dangerous. And that's why tree trimming, it's important for the reliability of the system and for the safety. Yes? Yes, sure.
Criticizing.
Right. Right. No, no, no. I'm just giving facts. I just want people to see that, you know, we care about the environment. We care about the trees and we, you know, actually, you know, we have, that's a message that we pass on to our tree services contractors that be respectful and they are respectful. But there's some people that they might be thinking that, you know, oh, why are you cutting these trees, you know, you're being so harsh, you know? It's, it looks bad. And we're just trying to keep them away from the energized equipment. Because once something blows up and Bob probably knows better, you've experienced that, you've seen that too. I mean, $35,000 switch, all of a sudden it's blown and damaged and now, you know, that's money costing the rate.
From a squirrel from the tree.
That's right. Jumping, you know, from. So, that is basically?
That video wasn't from that district here.
No, it wasn't from this district. This, actually, I caught this video from, it's overseas. So, that's right. It's not in the United States. But, you know, I just wanted to see the people to see the picture that, you know, well, even though it doesn't look like it's touching the wires, but in reality it is and that's what, you know. Actually, that line that you see, those overhead lines, these are 60 kilovolt voltage. 60 KV. We don't have 60 KV in the United States there. Highest distribution voltage is 35 KV. So, we don't have, we have 35 KV lines over here, but it's feeding the substation. So, basically, that's the message that I want to say with it. Now, let's talk about the equipment failure, which been 32% that accounts for 32% of the failures up to now, from January to now. These includes transformers, cables, wires and crossarms that, you know, we have had the failure on those. So, part of the problem is we had to kind of slow down our transformer, aged transformer replacement program. The reason for that being because the supplies are short. Now, the transformers, you're talking about almost two years out. The last bit that we went out, you know, it's the delivery, the next delivery is going to be anywhere between 52 weeks to 102 weeks. And now here that, you know, some companies, they're talking about 160 to 160 weeks, 260 weeks, I'm sorry. So, more than two years. So, if that's the trend within the next few years, we're going to have to basically conserve our supplies and making sure we use them wisely. So, we slowed down the transformer, aged transformer replacement program. Last year, we replaced about 178 transformers, which was a very productive year and that program pays back. But this year so far, we had to cut it down and save the transformers. We had to cut it down to 38, saving the transformers just for emergencies, storms and also for leakers. And you've got a lot of those still that, you know, they're trying to catch up with the many years of no maintenance. So, the program is paying off, but for now, we had to slow down. And that's part of the reason that, you know, that that number is up. The three problems, I mean, starting January 2020th, so, and I'm sorry your packet says 2022, but actually it's January 2020th. The law changed. Now, the tree trimmers are considered as laborers and not tree workers. So, now the tree services companies, you know, they're going to have to pay them prevailing wages. And the prevailing wages doubled up. So, back in 2018, contract we had with Mayor to 21, we were paying like about $60, you know, an hour. And the next contract, when we renewed 2021 to 2024, you're talking about $110, $120. So, they doubled up. So, now what we had to do as a result in order to stay within the budget, even though we increased the budget back in 2021 and now in 2022, we had to cut down the number of crews. We started originally with two or three crews and then we had to cut them back to two. And now, we have only one crew servicing all four towns. So, because the root cause analysis that we did that shows everything goes back to the trees and the drought that in our region, in Massachusetts, basically, is the cause of the problem. So, you're going to see that, you know, I'm making recommendations in our operational budget, operational maintenance to double up the tree trimming budget. So, we can have four crews, one dedicated for each town. Another thing we did as a proactive measure, we asked Mayor Tree Services to go and survey the entire service territory for the hazardous trees because some of the trees that have split and, you know, some of the trees, they got disease or insect infestation. So, you see that, you know, these trees are posing threats to the lines and they have identified lots of those. So, we need to take care of those and we need to, that's another reason that we need to be more proactive and, you know, get them out or, you know, train them, prune them back so they're not causing any problems for the reliability. So, another thing we found out also as? So another thing we found out also as I was doing my research, I see that, you know, actually there is a new, there is a phenomenon that I didn't know. They call it sudden limp or sudden branch drop. And this is happening during the drought season. Because the trees, they're trying to save their leaves and save the rest of the trees. So they decide to drop one of the limbs. So the water could reach the other branches and the, the root is not going to dry out. And we've seen lots of those that you're going to see in the pictures that, you know, that's been causing it really. And you, we see in a clear day, no storm, no rain, no nothing. And the limb just falls on the lines and it's taking the, by bringing the wires and poles and damaging the equipment. So we've had a lot of those this year. And I included some of those pictures for you to see. So, so what is basically, what is our strategy moving forward? The strategy moving forward is to increase the tree trimming and hazardous tree removal operational budget that we talked about. We are increasing the inventory for both maintenance and capital projects for the transformers and cables and wires. We're going to go, we're going to order transformers more frequently than we've done in the past. Our inventory right now, it's good. However, we saving those again, that's to trying to survive this, you know, this supply chain disruption issue. So it would have minimum impact on us. And we replacing all the transformers that they need to be done. And actually, some of the transformers coming back from the field, if they got a minor leak or something, a minor leaking from the valve, we try to fix them over here and put them in the inventory to use them for emergencies. Because, you know, we're not going to be able to replace them for two years. So we've been, we've been getting more creative in order to save money and also keep our inventory at the level that, you know, we're not going to be panicking if we go through major storms or major emergencies. So we also, RMLD is searching for extra protective guards like greeter guard line guards that, you know, these are basically the plastic bottles that I, you've seen that Bob. These are, they go on the line and you know, when animals, they go on them, they're, it rolls and they drop, they fall. So they can reach the, you know, the switch and transformers. So we started getting these in our inventory and we're going to install them on our expensive switches, interruptors and also SCADA switches as well, as well as the reclosers and the transformers. So they can just easily access the, the energized part of the equipment and cause damages. Another thing we, we, we change our strategy on the fiber and the crossarms. We have crow wood crossarms and now we are changing our crossarms to fiberglass. They are much easier to install and they don't break. And that's another thing that, you know, we found out during these storms that, you know, they break so easy and they're old. So we're now replacing them with the fiberglass crossarms. So we're taking all of these measures in order to bring the outages, the customer average interruption duration index and customer outages, bring them as low as we can to maintain the reliability. So I just wanted to go over the next slide. I just wanted to go over the RMLD current tree trimming plan that what we do, so the community, they know. Every year, our contractor, Tree Services, they put the IVMP plan together. That's Integrated Vegetation Management Plan, which basically it's going to describe how we're going to trim the trees and what we're going to do for the growth, vegetation growth. We are not spraying, we are not, you know, that's, that's not, even though there has been one incident that, you know, in Reading, that was a special case that we are addressing and getting involved. And we're going to meet with the Conservation Commission and also the tree warden to address that. That was very special case. For the past eight years that I've been here, you know, we have not used any, they have not used any spraying and they're using the mechanical method in order to manage the vegetations. So we took that completely out of all of the IVMPs for all the communities. So all the communities that have signed, we're meeting with the tunnel reading within next two weeks in order to address those, you know, issues and making sure the tree warden and also the Conservation Commission, they're happy with the, with the result by all means, you know. Then I talked, I talked to Chuck this morning and it was a very productive conversation. And we said we're going to be meeting with them. I should invite them to come over here because I want them to see our SCADA system and also outage management system and what we do. So it's something good for them to see. So we're going to, we're going to talk about that in details. But to cut a long story short, we care about the trees, the, the environment because they, they, they keep the environment cleaner for us. And also at the same time, we, we care about the public safety and also employee safety. So if we are trimming back the trees, we're not trying to kill them. We're trying to save them and save the, you know, the, the, the safety for the safe, in the interest of the safety of the public and also our employees when they trying to maintain the lines. So that's it basically. That shows, that shows our method of tree trimming and what the plans are. Every year, we presenting that plan just to make sure everybody is on the same page. And tree trimmers, basically they following the guidelines of the IVMP and they provide the report to us. And as I said, they're, they're going through the communities now. They're almost done with it to identify the hazardous trees and list them. And then once the budget is approved, approved, they're going to go out there and they're going to start with cooperation, collaboration with the tree wardens and the conservation commissions. They're going to go ahead and get the permits if necessary. And we, we're going to prune them or we're going to remove the hazardous trees that they're, they're diseased or, you know, they infested, yes.
So I understand if the tree is clearly on your property, then it's your responsibility to pay to have it trimmed if it's interfering with the lines?
That it's, it's, if it's approaching the street and approaching line, you know, we just trim back that, that portion.
You will come out and do that, okay.
But.
What if it's your sidewalk tree and you are responsible for that tree?
Sidewalk trees, they're town trees, basically.
Okay.
You know, that's what we do. That's, that's the stuff that, you know, we take care of. But the private property trees, we don't prune them unless if the branches are approaching our energized equipment, we're just going to cut back enough so they don't. But we don't get into private properties.
Sure.
And most people, they thinking that, you know, well, oh, well, this is my tree. Actually, the property lines, you know, maybe ten feet, five to ten feet inside property, this is still the town's, you know, owned, the town's right, basically. And if we trim the tree back or a limb, it is still basically considered that the town's.
Thank you.
Right, yes.
One quick question. I know, and what's your maintenance schedule for feeder, like a feeder patrol? Is it once, is everything looked at like once every year, two years, three years? Because Massachusetts Pro Zone is more like Long Island now and trees are growing faster, two to three feet more per year. And we were in a five-year cycle. That five-year cycle now should be at least a four-year cycle for tree trimming. You actually have to increase your tree trimming because of, of, of the climate that we're in. Trees are growing more.
You're going to see that in the twenty-twenty.
Yeah, actually, that's what it is. We started with, you know, four years, now we are three-year cycle. But again, we don't have enough resources that, I mean, that's why we need to increase the budget.
Yeah, it's just growth.
Yeah, that's right.
Cut everything down, it's easier.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's different equipment.
Yeah, that's a different equipment, right. That's, that's a different town, put it this way. But, but no, we are, we are basically, it's on a three-year cycle. But our, our method of tree trimming is also the main streets, the main drag, it's the priority number one. And then priority, the second priority would be the side street. So because we want to make sure that, you know, our main lines are clear. That's, that, that's what we need during the storm for restoring services. We need to make sure the main line is clear.
Thank you very much.
So that's it. Thank you so much for that. Other today, it just showed you some of the, you know, problems that we've had. You see that these trees that, you know, in Lynnfield, North Reading and Reading, the areas that, you know, we've had, the drought, that's what, that's what's done to that. And in one case, it was the insect actually that got into the tree and destroyed the limb and the limb came down. And there's no way that you can identify those until when they break away and you see that, you know, oh, well, there's nothing left to this tree. So, and the next slide. So I just put those pictures as a reference so you could see what's been going on.
Any other discussion on tree trimming before we move on to Amid's procurement requests report?
Yes.
Okay. So first up, we have the electric vehicle charging station, RFO.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move that RFQ two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-three for eight brackets, eight, the number eight in brackets. Level two electric vehicle supply equipment, EVSE, be awarded to Voltrek LLC in the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty B, Section twenty-two as the lowest responsible vendor on the recommendation general manager.
Second.
You want me to go over that?
Sure.
Okay. Well, this, this is for the program that actually we said, we promised that we're going to do for two for every town, basically. So we are purchasing the charging, it's a level two charging. And you know, we're purchasing eight of those so we can install those at every community, two per community, two for every town. So we send a bid out to a number of vendors and we got, we received two codes back from the companies Voltrek and the Voltrek LLC and Verdeck. So the lowest responsible, responsive bidder for that, for this case, was Voltrek for the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And that's what this is for.
What was the other one?
What was the other one?
The other one was, the other one, how much was that? Let me see. They haven't included this one. There was the, I think they didn't meet the, okay. They say that the Voltrek took an exception. So they didn't even consider that because they took lots of exceptions. So it was, I don't know how much that, that was, but because there was an exception, they rejected the bet.
From the other one?
From the other one, yes.
So you never got a price?
They didn't get a price. It says that, you know, they offered on alternative brand, which RMLD did not accept, also submitted code form was not signed. So they didn't sign as the code, the form and also they took lots of exceptions. So they were, the bid was thrown out, the only one that, you know.
Usually in the past, that's part of the package we get.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, I don't know why it's not in this package because that's always been the policy. Usually put both of them in.
But I'm seeing the, the budgeted amount was fifty grand?
Yeah, it was fifty thousand.
And this is seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Is there a way to go, go back and try to get more bids, maybe? I mean, these, there's not more than one company making these, right?
I wouldn't waste the time on seventy-five thousand, twenty-five grand.
Supply chain.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Yeah, so, so two things. One is, when it says twenty-five, so that was a sub, that was level two chargers. We had seven hundred thousand dollars in the budget. So there's, we're not, the categorization is different, but the budgeted dollars are there in terms of the EV charger. So we have an EG charger category. So there's not a budget over issue. Okay. And then the, I think the second bigger issue is one of the things that we tried to do, what, what Verdeck was trying to, what they were doing to do is offer a different brand and model. And what we're trying to do, I'll say standardized, but we've got almost forty charge point, level two chargers. So from a maintenance perspective, we want to standardize on those. And then the other one, that EVSE on the back page, that second one, that is the ones, and that, these are, these two are for two sites in Lynnfield. And these are the ones where it mounts ten, twelve feet above and the cable comes down, similar to what we put at the Wilmington Town Library and the Wilmington Town Hall. So we're trying to focus on these two types of equipment. So this is the charge point one, like the ones at the library? Just like the ones we have, yeah. And, and the EVSEs are like the ones we have in Wilmington.
Pole mount.
Pole mount, exactly right, pole mounts. Yeah.
So the eight, six are going to North Reading and two to Lynnfield?
So three are going to Lynnfield, right? And then the other five are going to North Reading. And we've worked, so a year ago, it was kind of no interest and now there's a lot of, like, can you get them in this year?
Yeah.
It's fine, yeah, it's just, it's just the way, and so, and we'd, we had have a, we had a budget for all four towns that, that had been rolling through for, I don't know, three or four years, prior to the two years that I've been here. Just never got anything started. So I think once last year, when we first got these in Reading and Wilmington, and there was, we learned a lot about how to do the siding and do the proper licensing. I mean, we learned a lot in that process. So Gilbert, so the town manager at North Reading is, 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 you know, so he's anxious. He actually wants to do more than this, so we're going to start with these. And then the DPW and the gentleman at Lynnfield is anxious to get these in two schools and then the town hall, the town hall's doing an upgrade as well. So the two, the, the school ones are the ones that are pole mounted. One, just given the configuration and the way they off to the side, it made sense to do the pole mounted ones at the.
Do they say they're anxious to get them because it drives up some business? People market you business there?
So, so none of these are commercial. They're all town, they're town-owned property on all these. So four of them are school related and then town, and then the other two are town hall.
Oh.
So we're, we're actually looking in Lynnfield to do, there's a couple of spots in Lynnfield that we're looking at, but that'll be a twenty-twenty-four then. These are, these are like sites are ready to go. Can you please put them in here and, and we're, we're trying to move quickly.
In Lynnfield, you're working with Peabody, which has got the other half of Lynnfield?
Uh, but it's a bottom quarter, yeah. So what's the question behind the question?
The question was, are you working with Peabody who has the other half of Lynnfield?
So the, the, the locations, the town hall and the two schools are all within our territory. So there's no coordination with Peabody. So we know the Peabody guys really well and we work well with them, but these two projects are in our territory.
Okay. Karen?
Um, just a quick update. I, I kind of agree with you, like it's accelerated, it was awesome. We are, PlayStation is flying two hybrid vehicles.
Yes.
I think one of our budget chargers is needing to go somewhere near there.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, no pressure. So the rapid charger, which I've been experimenting with my.
Yeah, DC fast.
I understand that we got to get, we need those fast chargers.
Yes.
You've got to go anywhere. Is there a delay at the library one, is that supply chain related?
Yeah, it, it was more associated with the grant. So that first one for the library was a, was a, a grant. And the first pass of the grant, the equipment that they originally had said would be okay, then they disqualified. So I had to go resubmit, it was a, the state was trying to redo their paperwork. And now we've got supply chain issues. So realistically, and then we have to go through a bid process because it's more than fifty thousand, even though it's, even though it's covered by a grant because we have to write the initial check and they get reimbursed. And we've got to run through the proper purchasing, it's over fifty thousand dollars. It'll all get reimbursed anyways. Bottom line, it'll be Q one. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, but the DC fast, so there's definitely a role for DC fast chargers, especially in the public sector. And so the other thing that, that Amid and I are working through with engineering teams as we think about the network upgrades is thinking about where we'll put DC fast chargers in versus level twos. Again, there won't, again, they're not going to, there will, there will not be chargers at every parking space, but there will be, you know, specific locations. So one of the things that we're trying to think through right now as we, as we think about network upgrades in all the towns. And then Commissioner Pacino, you know, as we've mentioned before, the super regional MLP concept, we'll get into that. It won't, it won't hit the charger right now, but that's a, that goes into some of the transmission projects that we're starting to work on. But anyways, we're trying to define the network to handle the DC fast because by definition, the DC fast are a hundred and fifty KW, where an L two is fifty KW. And so it's, it's significant. And if you guys are buying the Hummer, it is, I think it's two fifty KW. So, and, 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 you know, the benefit is you get a faster charge, but, you know, it'll, it'll. you get a faster charge, but, you know, it'll, it'll, you know, one of them on the network, not necessarily a challenge, but you get a whole neighborhood that, you know, Mrs. Jones and, you know, all the way down the street, everybody's got a Hummer and they're all charging at the same time. Now, now we're, now we're, now we're stressing transformers. But it's part of the process and that's how we're thinking about it. So.
All right. Moving along.
Got a vote on this now?
Oh, yes, please.
Did we second it?
It was, I think it was seconded already.
Taken.
Okay. All those in favor?
Just one, one comment?
Yes.
Uh, there's a name in here, ChargePoint. I own ChargePoint publicly traded stock, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Tom and I.
Marlena B. I.
Ms. Pacino abstains.
Okay. Motion carries. So our next procurement request is substation transformer testing and repairs.
Okay. Move that, move to authorize the interim general manager to award a contract for IFB 2022-39 substation transformer testing and repairs to the lowest responsible eligible bidder pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 39M, provided that the total price does not exceed 610,000.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, sure. The last time that we went out to bid and actually we had quite, you know, we had few bidders that they bid on it. And some, they took exceptions and one of them took some exceptions that seemed to be minor, which based on Chapter 30, 39M, it's very strict. So you're allowed to make some minor, you know, exceptions. And it was, the bid was awarded, was going to be awarded to Waukesha. Waukesha Prolec was the successful basically bidder. Once we started getting into contract and finalizing contract, we saw that, you know, those minor, those that we thought they were minor, actually they became major because they took more exceptions. And the, the interpretation of their, their, their exceptions was different than ours. So we, in order to come out clean, so we rejected all the bids and we said, we're going to go out to bid again. Now, another major development since the last bid, one of the transformer at Station 5, this is the older substation that we're trying to get the new substation in North Wilmington, that started demonstrating some problems. The, you know, the oil is leaking from the main tank into the LTC compartment, which is not good. So that means that it needs to be taken, whether it's a gasket that needs to be replaced or whatever, some parts need to be upgraded. Until you de-tank it and actually remove the oil and then look into, inspect inside, you're not going to be able to tell. So what you see over here, the addition over the last time that we, we asked for 440,000 actually, and now it's going to cost us more money in order to investigate that and see what the problem is with that transformer and fix it before it becomes a major problem. And this is time and material. It doesn't mean that, you know, it's going to be 610,000 that we're going to give lumps up. This is time and material. They're going to open up. If a repair needs to be made, then, you know, they're going to, you know, we're going to spend the money for the repair. If there is no repair necessary, and this is only gasket that they need to replace, so they just do whatever needs to be done in order to make sure that transform, we're going to keep that transformer alive, you know, for another four years, three, four years, until we build the new substation. So it's, this repair, it's very critical. Even if you had awarded, let's say that bid to Waukesha for 440,000 for this one, because the estimated repair is over $50,000. So we would have gone to another bid and, you know, we said that, you know, okay, let's, since they took exceptions, let's reject all the bids and lump some those five transformers at Station 5, Station 4, plus the one transformer at Station 5, make it total six, and, you know, have them to come and repair. At the same time, they're going to filter out the oil and take the moisture out of the oil also, which is one of the causes of transform failures for the substitution.
Any discussion? I'm going to look to Bob on this big one, but no?
No. No, you got to do it. You got to do what you got to do. You know, a lot of getting in the oil, it'll explode. It's basically.
That's what I was looking here for you.
So oil and water don't mix.
Not, not with electricity involved. No, no. The worst fires are the transformer fires.
Marlena B. I.
Tom and I.
Make that tree look good.
Thank you, Ahmed.
Thank you.
The good news is, I think we're about halfway through the meeting. So, or maybe that's the bad news. I don't know.
Seven minutes stretch, huh?
Okay. Report of the general manager search committee from detail that.
And, and Bob as well.
And Bob as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead. So we initially started with a pool of 30 applicants that we, the pool was vetted. It was dropped down to 15 by the search subcommittee composed of two commissioners and one person from the CAB. And out of the 15, again, that, that group was struck down to five. And the interviews for those five people are in process. They should be ending next week. And at that point, we will have a recommendation for the full board of moving forward or potentially looking for some more candidates. But as of right now, we are in process and should be through the five by next week.
Do you have, so when you mentioned looking for more candidates, but do you have an end date when you would stop?
I wouldn't say there's an end date. It's, it's more that we have more interviews to do. So it depends how those go. I mean, whether we then decide we have, say, three that we, for example, that we want to come in for the public interviews. So it depends on the outcome of the, the interviews already scheduled. The only thing I would add to what Bob said is the minutes, we've had a couple of meetings and we approved the minutes. So those meeting minutes are available. Just going through what Bob said and what our process has been, where it was advertised, you know, it's been advertised on the public, main public power. That's the APPA, which is the Nationwide Public Power Association and, and other places. It is widely, the listing has been seen, you know, we saw at the NEPA conference, just conversation in the hallway, everybody's seen it. So all the community and the state knows about, you know, and so they know, so there's, we don't feel there's a lack of awareness of the opening. So one of the, one of the discussions earlier in the year was, do you hire a consultant, like, you know, the town did for the town manager? And we looked at that and we actually had interviews with that consultant and two others who operate on a different model where they take a third of the salary, you know, as a fee, as opposed to Bernie Lynch, who would be 15 grand. And we actually interviewed all three. So we actually are prepared that if needed, we're ready to recommend, we voted to this effect.
Yes.
That if, if, if we determine need, we might come and recommend. If we did, it would be Bernie Lynch. We've, we've said that in public session. However, at this time, I think the consensus on the board is that, the committee, is that we don't need, we, we probably don't need to go through that step of hiring anybody. I mean, based on what we've seen.
Right. We'll be bringing three candidates out at, at the end of this entire process to be publicly interviewed.
Yeah, that's, so we don't see yet. And I think, yeah, good. So.
Yep. So.
Any questions?
No, I think you're on the right track. I mean, that's pretty much kind of what we did from before. For the, for the previous general managers committee, the, the only thing bad we had is we had one of, some of the people actually dropped out before they even got to the interview.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So we'll see. Thank you.
Got it?
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
So our general interim general managers training and travel budget came up recently. We have a, a motion.
Okay.
Did you read it?
Yeah. Move that the board of commissioners approve travel related expenses not to exceed $600 a week and to be allocated from the existing budget for Gregory Phipps as interim general manager and director of integrated resources to cover a total hotel, I assume the word costs should be in there, if he, if he determines it's necessary to stay local for business purposes.
Second.
All of them favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pacino is going to vote present here.
Oh?
Vote present.
Okay.
I don't think this, I, this should, this should be a contract item.
Why don't you vote against it?
We already have a training and travel budget that far exceeds what this could possibly actually come to. So it's.
I mean, if it's during a storm.
This is John Stumpach's idea.
So you, you know, yes, but, you know, right now, this is, this is carte blanche.
I think.
That's why I disagree with it.
Okay.
Should we talk about the history of where this came from? No?
I have no idea where this came from. It's never, we've never done it before.
I think we just voted though.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already voted. So I guess it's a moot point, right?
Moot point.
Yeah.
We thought it was fair.
Well, it's, it's here to not call for discussion.
Oh. Should we most, I'll, I'll move to reconsider so we can have the discussion. How about that?
Okay.
You want to?
I'll second.
Okay. So do we vote to reconsider? Just so that we can have the discussion that is wanted?
Yep. Move to reconsider.
Move to reconsider? Okay. So now?
Okay. So again, it's just, you know, this is open ended at this point. It's something that's never been done in the past. If there's a storm, yes. There's, there's always been the policy. They can stay during a storm because you want to, you want to have the, you want to have your people on and include the manager on, on, but it's never been done before. This, this motion is wide open at this point. It's a carte blanche. He could, you know, right now, you're saying he, every, every week, he could, you know, it could be for $600. And it basically would, in the past, this has always been part of a contract, just like the car.
Okay. This is unusual circumstance because we have him doing two jobs interim.
You know.
And John Stumpak, who's been around a long time too, thought that we should at least alleviate a little bit of the time that that requires. Not that Greg has asked for anything, but it would be a good faith if you, I mean, he's working long hours. That's all.
You just mentioned that it came from, it was recommended, because John's not here, obviously.
Yes.
But just to clarify that he proposed.
I would have no problem if there was some sort of restrictions on this, but right now, this is, this is wide open.
As I understood it, the restriction is that when we choose a general manager, this would end. So it does have a.
There's no restriction on this. Greg tomorrow, and, and no offense, Greg. Okay? No offense. Greg could tomorrow can go out and stay here every week for $600 a week.
So should it be hotel? I mean, it's not really travel. Maybe it should be clarified to say that it's for hotel res, up to two nights of a hotel.
Yeah.
Not to exceed.
Like that. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think John's intention is 600.
Right.
A hotel is 250.
Right.
There it is.
So there's two nights right there.
I, I don't think we need to get into the details of it.
Right.
I think a monetary limit is fair.
Goes to expense report. It's all.
Yeah, exactly. There's an expense report where, which we, we would review.
Yep.
Right? So I, I don't think there's any.
No need to change it?
No need to change it from a monetary point of view.
I was only saying the hotel expenses rather than travel related. That's all.
I would just say travel, travel, travel related is, is the same because it's meals and whatever.
You can stay at my house.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I, we're asking Greg to do two jobs where he's not doing one.
Okay.
And approaching.
I have made my points.
Yep.
And he's coming up from Rhode Island.
Yep.
And so it's, it's just, yeah. So now do we re-vote? Because we reconsidered and now we had the discussion.
So I can reread the motion again. Move that the board of commissioners approve travel related expenses not to exceed $600 a week and be allocated from the existing budget to Gregory Phipps as interim general manager and director of integrated resources to cover a total cost if he, if he determines it necessary to stay local for business purposes.
Second.
Marlena B. I.
Tom and I.
Ms. Gold, right? Pacino again voting present.
Well, the motion carries.
Okay.
And about the ENE strategic meeting coming up in October.
Right.
We have a motion for that too, to approve Greg Phipps' travel to that in Vermont.
So I'm going to kind of reword this motion a little bit. Move that the board approve Greg Phipps' travel to and attendance at the ENE strategic receipt to take place in Waterbury, Vermont on October 24th through 27th, 25th, 2022. You got it?
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dave seconded.
I seconded it. So you're just wondering, no discussion?
A discussion?
No.
Okay. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Marlena B. I.
We'll expect a full report back.
Yep.
Four zero. Thank you.
Yep. Oh, on that note, if I may. So one of the things that I will put into the package for the October session are suggestions of strategic initiatives or strategic things that we would like ENE to pursue on behalf of RMLD. So I'll, I'll get that to you ahead of time. So you guys can think about that and we'll leave some time to discuss those or make any additions to it at the October meeting, the October VOC meeting. And I can then take those to the, the strategy meeting at ENE. And that, I think that's consistent what you talked about. So that, that's part of the sequence here. So it's not just me going. It's, I want to actually, the, the request from the last meeting was either if there are suggestions and ideas that the individuals, MLPs would like, that we should try and incorporate them at this meeting.
Yeah. Just one more point, the $600, Greg. You realize this is a fringe benefit you'll be paying tax on.
My understanding, Phil, that it would be a expense associated with the work and it would be an expense budget, not a.
I suggest you get, you get that in writing somewhere.
Well, that's why we put it through the expense budget.
The expense budget, I thought was already.
I'll check with my tax guy, but that's part of the reason why.
We already voted on that anyway. It's up to him and his tax return.
And since you're mentioning the October meeting, the, I'm going to tell you guys that it's going to be budget focused.
Yes, it'll be budget focused, primarily budget focused.
Primarily. Yeah. Okay. So those future dates are Thursday, October 20th, and continue on November 17th, December 22nd, January 19th, 23, February 16th, 23, March 16th, 23, all at 7:30. Those are Thursdays in this room. Yes, Bob?
I'm struggling with some Thursdays. I, I'm getting a conflict with Thursdays. Is it possible that we move, shift some of these to a Wednesday? Maybe the November 16th and December 22nd is school vacation week during that week. So that we might want to think about moving that one to the 14th.
I agree with.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that.
That makes sense. Because that 20 seconds a week are Christmas anyway.
But November 16th is a Wednesday and December 14th is 22 minus eight. Okay. Also a Wednesday.
And then potentially February 15th on a Wednesday?
Am I going wrong with that?
No, I'm, 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 I think Thursday works for a lot of people. I just, I just, I just got to move some things around on, on Thursday.
That's fine. Because we'd rather 100% attendance and participation.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that. You guys think that works for you now?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah, I'm good at that. I'm good any days.
Erica, you got those? I wrote them down if you want to talk later about that.
And also I had a thought. I can't remember if last year we did the budget meeting combined with the CAB, although the CAB needs to vote first.
I think what we decided last year is we would get some sort of presentation in advance because I found that last year I actually attended the CAB when the presentation was made. And I got so much more out of that and so much time to think about it in the meantime. So the budget really needs to be two meetings. Just to be one, I think that we decided to do that last year.
We should start at six.
Yes.
On, on those nights.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we're getting, we're going.
Yeah.
You're used to the slowness.
I know.
I, I think, you know, I know we're doing the CAB ahead of time, but it's a.
So for Thursday, October 20th, we want to start at six? Because that's the budget night?
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah. As long as we confirm with.
Well, we, we have a budget review meeting scheduled for the 13th of October.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Can we meet that night? And then the 20th, we can actually approve the, the.
Do you say October 13?
13.
13.
13.
Right.
Yes. In Linfield, presumably.
Great.
Yeah. We suggested maybe we make that 13th a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way you can.
You can make it great. And it's in Linfield?
Well, right now, the, the meeting for the 13th, I was asked to, it's on a rotating basis.
I'm more than happy to go to Linfield.
Okay. We can do that. Six o'clock, Thursday, October 13th. What time is the 13th meeting?
We have it down for 6:08 o'clock.
Six, okay.
From 6:00. From 6:00 to 8:00.
Okay. And then the 20th is at six? Okay. So we moved some things.
Some coordination.
And the joint meeting, can I move on to the select board joint meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is scheduled for next week, but didn't I see on something else, we moved that to October 6th?
No.
No. Is October 6th a three hour truck thing?
I don't know if we made with a meeting on Saturday.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, it's the, it's the.
Is it like touch a truck?
It's a, it's, so, the 6th is three hours, so 6th or 7th to 9, or 7th to 10, it's, it's part of the economic develop, we're hosting basically the town of Reading, invite neighbors to talk about potential uses of this land. It was done a couple of years ago, and we're gonna do it again. That's on the 6th of October.
That's run by Aaron.
Yeah, so, yeah, and that's the, and the town, so we're, we're the physical host, and they're, they're running the show, so to speak. And then the meeting that we had tentatively scheduled with the select board to talk about this, about, you know, what we do at Station 1, what we do with all this kind of stuff. We did have our intermediate meeting with the Barbis team, and Carlo, and, and Bob, et cetera. So we're moving the ball forward, and Weston and Sampson are finished, are almost done with their stuff. What Fidel and I agreed to do, because of the budget stuff, is take a November meeting and do an update on the joint development opportunity. So what we're technically gonna do next Tuesday night at 6 o'clock as a, in, for the hour ahead of the select board meeting with town of Reading, we're basically gonna move that two months out. And it's not, and just, so for the whole public, that's not because nothing's happening, that's just, there's a lot of information that's going to come together after next Tuesday night. The 6th would be of October, would be one of those events, and then some additional stuff from Sampson. So collectively, we thought it'd be best to have all that information together before we regroup together between the select board and the commissioners.
The hour prior to the select board meeting on November 20th or so?
Yeah, I'm not sure, we didn't.
You're not sure, okay. And then that will be more of an update?
This morning, we didn't find, yeah, it's, it's, it's again an update. It's not any final decisions, but I think collectively, all the parties wanna move the ball forward. But as opposed to just meeting for the sake, it's good to, to have meetings to keep the ball moving forward, but in this case, there are a couple of intermediate things, in addition to what we've already done, that will make that next meeting more valuable.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, good.